Who's in the house? Is there rooms?
Turn on the lights on.
There you go, yeah, turn on the lights on, yeah.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Council meeting is beginning to begin. The time is now five thirty-one PM. We'll start off with the invitation led by ourselves, all about the place police. You will rise. Ladies and gentlemen. Those who wish to have the word Jesus for Christ's sake this hour, we do thank for our blessed day. We thank for the blessing of receiving this day, Father. We ask that you lead with this council, lead with this administrative staff, mayor, the administrative staff, and the citizens who came out to this meeting. You'll lead guidance, guidance, follow the main, remain silent with one another, Lord. We ask that holy name that you rest over the traffic, be with them. For those who couldn't make it tonight, Lord, if you're sick or injured or something, some reason, they're good when they're here yet, you lead with them. Just asking you to lead guidance, guidance, may your this meeting worship thy precious holy name, pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Lord God, please.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
President Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Irvin?
Aye.
President Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Tate?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peet?
Aye.
Thank you. We now have the vice chair call three. Your motion to approve the amendment to the article fifteen, being approved.
Second.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
President Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Irvin?
Aye.
President Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Tate?
Councilwoman Tate?
Aye.
Thank you. We have tonight, we have recognition and award. The mayor. We'll recognize and award someone tonight. Thank you, Mr. President, thank you everybody. We can do better than that school last night. So I want to start tonight by recognizing and presenting a certificate of appreciation to coaches, homeboys. You all come up. Well, Mr. Taylor, their family and their restaurant, they're always willing to do whatever needs to be done in the community. They support so many great colleges. Um, they're willing to do whatever our administration needs to follow them. Um, June 10th, we ran out of food, we were right here with the food, we said, we got it, we got it, boy. So I just want to acknowledge you, thank you for your service to the community, the community, the people, life. I have a whole God, I want to ask for amendment to the agenda. I ask for amendment to the temple. Will allow a guest speaker tonight to come up and speak for us. Mr. Kuyan, from our energy. Step up, call me sir, use your name and your business and whatever it is you want to get.
Yes, sir, I was, had, had no intention of speaking tonight. However, I just wanted to introduce myself to the council. I've spoke to the mayor a couple of times, I've spoken to a couple of y'all. So, um, after the meeting, um, we have to give my content and information again, any questions?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, we'd like to call this Kathy Morrison.
Yes.
Kathy Morrison.
Hi, my name is Kathy Morrison. I'm so glad to be back to the council and have several spaces over previous years. I've worked in Louisiana Department of Health and all the work that we do here together for several years, actually. Um, I do serve in a different role now, and so I am actually the Navigator Helping Louisiana statewide health and community outreach coordinator. And Gloria and I met at the motion prosperity meeting, um, when the grand opening and congratulations for having it here. Thank you, Mayor, for being such an advocate for that, a positive change for this community. And so Gloria and I were talking about some of the changes that are also happening to our lower income families in Washington Parish. And so one of the changes that she does that most people realize is that Medicaid unwind. There are a lot of changes to Medicaid unwind right now, and there's a lot of residents in Washington Parish who will be terminated from their healthcare insurance plan, which is Medicaid. And so just to let you know that this, there are resources to help with that, and that's one of the programs that I've been working with. And so Navigator Helping Louisiana is a federally funded grant program that what we do is assist residents apply for Medicaid and the marketplace plan. Um, with Medicaid unwind, I want to just tell you briefly what that is. Um, during COVID, they did not check anybody's eligibility for Medicaid. And so for three years, nobody's eligibility Medicaid has been, has been checked. That means now we have over two million forty-five thousand people in our state, forty-two percent, that are on Medicaid. That changed in April. In April, they started redetermining it again. And the result of that is the first terminations that happened July 1st, fifty thousand residents were terminated for Medicaid. Okay, fifty thousand. And they do expect that number to climb to probably four hundred, five hundred thousand. One of the reasons Gloria felt it's so important for me to come is that for thirty-eight thousand of that fifty thousand were terminated because they did not return the paperwork. Only about thirteen thousand were no longer eligible. So one of the things that we're really trying to get the word out, and we are working with our health units, I had meetings with those today, um, and both sides of the parish, is that we do not want people to be able to not get healthcare coverage when they show up. Now, of course, angels takes all, but when they show up, they're regular physician, and they have been terminated and did not know they were terminated or did not haul the paperwork. So we're doing a broad awareness campaign, and I think anything that I can do to help your residents to know about this will help very much so. So with eligibility determinations, a family of, of one right now is about twenty thousand, twenty and twenty-one thousand to still be eligible. A family of four is forty-four thousand. Okay? Now, the bright spot of this is that, hey, you've got a better job since COVID, you're making more money. But, but it can be detrimental if you lose your health insurance, your Medicaid, and your, and, and your employer does not have health insurance, or you can't afford it. Because you're still basically, basically still low income. What the resources are is there are federal marketplace. Okay, that was passed, it's called Affordable Care Act, it was passed under President Obama. And that is private health insurance that is federally subsidized with federally subsidized premiums, and also includes cost sharing to make it deductible lower. That is plans like Lucross, that's plans like Vantage, that's, it's Amber Care, HMO Louisiana. So that's private health insurance, very quality, comprehensive care. But a lot of people don't realize that they can still be health insurance. So what, what our services are, we are a statewide program, we do cover Washington Parish. Um, so we cover all sixty-four parishes in the state. And what, we are not insurance agents or brokers, we are navigators and assisters. So basically what we do is we have people in the community come to local locations. We don't have office, we come to them, we come to church, to the library, and we're usually twice a month at the public health unit, do an onsite enrollment, so they can have assistance on how to answer the questions correctly. Now, we do partner with Medicaid, we do have a partnership and contract with Medicaid as well. Um, if you call Medicaid right now, fifty thousand people are calling Medicaid right now. You can mention what the phone lines are, they're about an hour and twenty minutes right now. But we are available then now to help people. And so that's what our services do. So what we will do is lead one-on-one with your constituents and be able to answer the correct, uh, questions correctly for Medicaid or marketplace. If they're not eligible for marketplace, one application is going to put them in either plan. With marketplace, they're also going to get tax credits. I tell people, like, so the balance on your mouth, you get a tax credit? You get a federal marketplace health insurance plan, you get a tax credit. Okay? So there is that available that people are just not aware of. So I think my message is basically to spread the word that this is happening. This is going to happen through July of twenty twenty-four. Okay, so Medicaid is doing about a hundred and sixty thousand people per month and checking their eligibility. So auntie's going to get a letter in September, and brother is not going to get a letter till next March, and they're going to wonder why. One family, the mom's going to get a letter, the children are not going to get a letter. It's all over the place because it's being done batches of randomized, um, accounts. So that's very confusing for people, and they don't know, you know, why or what's happening a lot of times. So if you can help us spread the word, I do have some rat cards that I can give, I'm a pass, I'll give out to you guys. Again, those available to the audience as well, and also have my cards. So spread the word, let them know that we don't want them to go without healthcare coverage. We don't want them to show up at Nielsen's and not be able to get their insulin that they need for diabetes cure. Okay, so that's what our services do, that we can help them either by phone, virtually, or in person. We can help with them to know either get reinstated if they're still eligible, because it is happening that people, because they didn't send their letters in, got terminated. And they're going to continue to get terminated, don't send it in. So we can help them get reinstated as well as get on another plan. So thank you for your time today. Um, y'all know my love for Bogalusa. Um, I love Bogalusa, I love you guys very much. And I only always want to be able to find the resources and services to make Bogalusa the best place to live in the world. So thank you very much. If you could, please, could you, could you give the cost, the, the cost to the citizens? Wait, wait, cost of what? The cost of your services. Well, free. Kathy, we are a grant-funded program, so everything we do is free, uh, our services, and we're not even limiting our appointment time. We can spend an hour and a half, we can spend thirty minutes, we can spend whatever time it needs. Yes. I'm sorry.
Ladies first.
Uh, Ms. Kathy, for those of you who told me in advance, such an important topic, can you give us your name again and a phone number? Yes, yes. Uh, my name is Kathy Morrison. Um, you can contact me at nine eight five, nine six zero, zero zero nine eight. You can also contact me by T A F F Y dot M O R R I S O N at S W L A H E C dot org. Okay? Um, I'm sorry.
Thank you for coming, thank you for having us, and your question, you are. Are you all aware that we get a lot of phone calls now, people claiming that that's something we call claiming that they're making? They send letters out and it's confusing to allow for that to be.
Yes, there is a ton of confusion, there are stand calls going on as well. And so we have had a lot of stand calls. Okay, so his question, his question is three parts, so let me do that in three parts. One, there is a organization, there's a group that Medicaid has contracted with, and they're nonprofits, and we're one of them as well, that when a renewal letter is not returned within the thirty-day period, this organization has given their name to call them to say, you were sent a renewal letter, you're going to be terminated if you do not return the information. That's one group that may be called. Okay? You also are getting two letters, so you're getting a letter to say that you, you renewal letter. Okay, you're going to get that renewal letter if you, if you cannot, there's a couple of reasons why you may get that renewal letter. One is that they cannot verify your income through the labor assistance. We have a software, it's a software program called Espartec program. And you can't verify that. Say you work as a, um, a waitress. One week you work twenty hours, one week you work ten hours, or a week you work thirty hours, your income's not stable. So they don't know what your true income is. And so they're going to ask you to submit a, uh. Three, you have a child that's turned eighteen. They don't know if they still live in the household or not live in the household, or they moved out. They're going to ask you for how many people still live in the household. So that's all the questions they're going to ask you to get renewal letters, that's one of the letters you'll get. You'll probably also get another warning letter that says you will be, you're going to be, you're being redetermined and you're being terminated. Then you can get a termination letter, or you can get an eligibility letter, depending where, what you get. Okay? There's another group, which is our group also, is that once you are terminated, okay, from Medicaid, Medicaid gives, um, another part of our organization, a list of those that have been terminated. We reach out to those and say, you've recently been terminated, do you need help to be reinstated, or do you need help with your program? So those are some of the calls. Now, I mentioned stand calls, there are stand calls. Okay, there are, I talked to a lady for, oh, she was from Washington Parish, she was from Angie. Um, a few weeks ago, who actually bought health insurance from somebody in Florida. And I said, how in the world did you get contacted by somebody in Florida? And I, and she says, I don't know, they just called me. Well, then she didn't have a plan that she could afford, now she can't go to the doctor at all. Because her, uh, the plan she has is a hundred dollars for a doctor visit.
I hope that we can land for the board, that, that, that your business is great.
Right.
I mean, that's not a problem.
You can, you can contact me, um, because I can do that, because we are reporting all these stands to Medicaid. And then we're also, we did have one in Lake Charles that he paid three hundred and sixty dollars for what insurance company? He got it back because we advocated, and we followed, and we advocated, and we found out, and that was a, that's fair, I'm pretty sure. And so we, we got money back.
So that's, okay.
So there is that, so just be aware, it should not, it should be a call from Medicaid, it may be from navigator. They should give you their ID number. Okay, because we all have an ID number that we have to give over the phone. Okay? And then, you know, also ask them for their website and ask them who, you know, reports that, that can call them back, ask them to check. And you can call me, and I'll leave the cards, you call me, I'll call. That's all we got, that's all we got. Okay, what's your other questions? Okay. Thank you, guys, and I haven't heard a bell yet, so maybe I'll have that time. But, um, thank you, guys, for your time, and, and help us to be advocates out there, just to protect our residents. So we know that Washington Parish already has a healthcare, health crisis. Um, y'all are usually our rate of sixty's unhealthiest parish in the state, so we don't want to increase that number. By not being able to ensure its health. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Kathy Morrison. I'd like to now move on with the introduction. We have our thoughts and resolutions tonight, but we have to introduce the ordinance. The first ordinance to be amended this evening might have been called, so we'll go on with the, the next ordinance. Next, I would ask for a member to the agenda to add an ordinance that we weren't able to get on the agenda, the management of the agenda, it was made. Can I get a motion to amend the agenda?
So, one second.
Lord, I will, I will.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
President Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Irvin?
Aye.
President Taylor? Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Tate?
Uh, Councilwoman Peet?
Aye.
This is an ordinance to be introduced on the high. The ordinance is, before I move forward, if anyone is going to read the ordinance, uh, the ordinance is an ordinance to accept a reviled copy of Bogalusa employee handbook authorized to the mayor, due to force provisions herein. That will be discussed at our next council meeting. Next, we have an ordinance to be introduced by Councilwoman Temple.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept on behalf of the city of Bogalusa from William W. Nielsen Jr., the donation of one city lot, one hundred and twenty by one hundred and fifty feet, in section forty-one, Canons Hundred subdivision flat, to the city of Bogalusa. And we'll vote on that at the next meeting.
Thank you, Kathy Morrison. The next ordinance to be introduced, to be introduced by Councilwoman Smith.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a few supply agreement between the city of Bogalusa and Roxton, our company. This ordinance will be, um, just introduced tonight, just to give a little information brief. Um, for Gavin, it's point one zero four nine, and any time after hours will be a hundred and twenty-five dollars. We will, uh, next council meeting, and I will give more detailed information at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Smith. Next, the next ordinance to be introduced today will be introduced by Councilwoman Temple.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract between the city of Bogalusa and Professional Community Consultants Corporation involving civil system improvements. And we will discuss this and vote on it at the next meeting.
Thank you, Councilwoman Smith. Next ordinance to be introduced, to be introduced by Vice President, he does.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperative agreement with the state of Louisiana for a hundred and sixty-two thousand, of the purchase of additional, uh, project. This will also be voted out.
Thank you, that's, Vice President. Next, we'll move on to our public hearings and the adoption of law items. The first thing I want to do is ask for another amendment to the agenda. This was left off in the last one, was to ask for the, uh, to be able to vote on the ordinance to the table for the last meeting, but I have to have an amendment to, uh, to, to take it off the table. First, we have to have an amendment to, uh, amendment to the, uh, to the agenda.
How they motion? Say.
Lord, I will, I will.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
President Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Irvin?
Aye.
President Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Tate?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peet?
Aye.
Thank you, that, and I'm going to read the ordinance, this is to take it off the table, we're going to reread the ordinance, and then we'll move forward with it again. The ordinance that we read today is an ordinance requested by the plan and zoning from Tina Ratna for the removal of a sign located at nine two three South Columbia Street in Magic City Tire, and to install as per submitted, submitted a design and permanent pre-standing on premises, two-sided, changeable message sign across the street from nine oh four South Columbia Street, Zone C, which is owned by David Ratna. Any motions?
I'd like a motion, a second.
Anybody in the audience wish to speak for or against this ordinance? During the council discussion of this ordinance.
I did, I have times discussion, I did have opportunities to go and visit with, uh, this Ratna over at nine four South Columbia Street, uh, Zone C. And, uh, with that being said, that particular signage, there was some questions, I believe, last time, as far as, uh, the legal boundaries of it. And, uh, I did invite, I'm not sure if she's here tonight, I did invite Miss Ratna to come forth, she liked it. Come forth, she, I mean, I could hear tonight, but you also talked to her too, right, President Taylor? Tell us to Miss Ratna? Yes, okay. So there, there isn't any, uh, any questions, is there?
No questions, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. 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 Tate. One of the witnesses, fifty, uh, Ratna, and, uh, over something, and Stephen Ratna. And, uh, we had a question about it, she satisfied us with the answer, and so we're here now to vote on the, the, uh, ordinance that we just read today. Like to have a vote call, vote call over the call.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
President Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Irvin?
Aye.
President Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Tate?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peet?
Aye.
Thank you, ma'am. The next ordinance we have to be introduced, to be introduced by Councilwoman Tate.
An ordinance to correct and update the voting record of ordinance number twenty-seven sixty-one in reference to authorizing the mayor to enter into a general service agreement between city of Bogalusa and Brennan's vending, providing ATM services to the city of Bogalusa. And amendment of given timeline, thirty days to produce, um, a license. Well, what this particular ordinance is about, it's not per se the ordinance of the licenses that has to be provided. It was as if the, the particular, the particular minutes to coincide with the voting records. Particular minutes indicated that there were four, uh, four and two against, I believe. And the voting records indicated that there were actually three, four, and two against. So it's just a matter of, of correlating, correlating the two voting records and the minutes. And with that being said, so move.
A second.
Is there anyone in the audience that would, anyone like to speak for or against this ordinance? Everybody knows they're having a council discussion?
So bottom line, it's per charter, it's for to vote any upper and down any points. So if that's the way the record is going to reflect.
Exactly.
Any other council discussion? Let's make a real council discussion by call, or, or call, please.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
President Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Irvin?
Aye.
President Taylor? Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peet?
Aye.
The next ordinance we have, we have tonight, we have a good duty, we have a good duty by Councilwoman Peet.
It's authorizing the mayor to enter into a personal and all real property litigation contract for the sale of personal and all real property by public auction over a private treaty between the city of Bogalusa and Certain Board International Incorporated.
So just for context, um, this is for us to enter into an agreement with the private company to have a city auction. We have a lot of surplus that we need to get rid of. It's lining our, our facilities. And we don't tolerate that from residents, and we shouldn't be doing it here at City Hall. So this is just for us to, um, be able to auction off this property.
With that being said, so moved.
Do we have a vote?
So moved.
Is there any public discussion on this matter?
I've got an extra question on this.
Just a second, I'll just vote and shut. Thank you. Pass the raise up, please. Four more, are you? All right.
A donation back there to Austin Street. Um, a question that's going to bother, but a question this may mean that shall be donated to a, uh, organization or to be it on every time.
Um, so anybody is welcome to bid on the property. I'm not sure about donations.
Okay. If you can take it to, because that's no, I mean, back when basically trying to get our own office and set up and, uh, in operation, then we let people make some practice some equipment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion on the public? I got a grant.
A mid-grade, one-ten grade drive. I have two questions. One is plenty of a list of items to be available. And tell us the site that you go to, to, because everybody doesn't know that you go to and get them. And even though it is online, City Hall, you still can't bid according to its commission.
That's correct. Right, um, yes, ma'am, we're aware of that ethics rule. Also, uh, we'll be releasing all the information. If the council approves tonight, it will be released tomorrow. It will be posted on City Hall stories as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any other discussion on the public? Any other public discussion, any council discussion?
I got a council discussion, Mr. President.
Yes.
Uh, Mayor, have you declared this surplus before going to surplus? I know it's a legitimate company, and I know about the company, American Sladeville. But have you declared it surplus and then record the van numbers to each vehicle or serial numbers of equipment or whatever, and declared it surplus and bring it to the council? Yes, sir. So you all approved the surplus list that we planned to use back in April, I believe. But yes, it has been approved by the city council. Okay, I just want to make sure. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Is there any other council discussion? Is there any other public council discussion? Call for a vote, a vote call?
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
President Kellys?
Yes, I'm going to vote in just a second, and I'll be against this call by eye. I think the, the commission on this will be made up by the, by the proceeds. So it won't cost, uh, as much as I know it's not going to cost you. That's true, it's just going to be by division.
So, right, so they did a ten percent of whatever we grow. So if we don't sell anything, they don't make anything.
That's a question, thank you, that, I'm a little worried about that. Thank you, I have a vote, yes, aye.
Councilwoman Irvin?
I will. I want to say one thing before I pass my vote. Uh, you can sign up for the free brochure. Uh, you can get online and sign up for the free brochure, have it mailed to your house. And in this month, brochure is already on that. I don't sell the vehicles and I'll always be selling. I, I say aye.
President Douglas? Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gates?
I, I think you, the, uh, brochure as well is very, uh, very, uh, friendly brochure. They already have our information and we're ready to rock. Aye.
Councilwoman Keys?
Aye.
Next ordinance we have to be introduced by Councilwoman Irvin.
An ordinance authorizing the city council to approve the hiring of EAGGL codes of RLC to assist the city of Bogalusa with certain tasks related to the fiscal year and close for December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, congregation letter dated August third, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, that, yes, ma'am. We have a vote?
I make a motion.
You have a motion, you say. Is there any public discussion on the ordinance that we just read today? Any other public discussion, is there any council discussion?
I believe this is a whole postal method, another way to just thank them. It's one of those.
Thank you, that, ma'am. Is there any other discussion, a call for a vote, a vote, first, please?
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
President Kellys?
Aye.
Councilwoman Irvin?
Aye.
President Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gates?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keys?
Aye.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The next ordinance we have to be introduced by Councilwoman Keys.
So ordinance authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation to establish a fee schedule for the use of camper plots in Cassidy Park. And currently, as it stands, the free bill is forty dollars a day. Uh, the event with, uh, with the mission charging is underdog today. So, uh, the passing of this will allow the mayor to negotiate with the, uh, ordinance to be passed.
Is there any public discussion on this matter? For, or here?
So for context, so this, um, this ordinance, basically what we have right now, during special events, people can bring campers into Cassidy Park. Currently, any organization that charges, they keep the proceeds. But when you hook up a camper in the park, guess who covers the utility deal? The city. So by passing this, this would allow us to negotiate with these groups so that we aren't getting the short end of the stick each and every time. Um, this, the campers would only be allowed during special events. So this is not going to be anybody can just come pay and come stay in Cassidy Park. It will still just be for special events.
General, ma'am, ladies?
I have a question.
As I'm reading, Mr. President, pardon, I heard a drop in the vote, motion and second. Now, miss that. We got to do the motion and second, and then publish that. We don't want to get, he's on.
Go ahead, go ahead, I'll wait.
On the ordinance, we're still into, we're still into, we have a motion, we got a motion. We got a motion and a second. Now we have the public discussion. Okay, ma'am, go ahead.
My name is Michelle Good, sixteen twenty-two, Poney Grant Road, Bogalusa. I'm also the executive chairperson, chairwoman for the Bogalusa Blues and Heritage Festival. I am here to answer any questions that the council might have in relation to the park, um, the fees. We seem to be the only event that goes on at the park right now that charges a fee. And we do utilize the, um, the camping spots. So I'm here for any questions that y'all might have.
Ms. Good, uh, thank you for coming. Uh, what is your, what is your budget for?
So this, for every year, our budget changes depending on the acts that we have. This year, when we received our budget, it was right at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. What goes into that budget is not just the musical acts. What goes, the majority of that is insurance, musical, um, the sound system that we put on the stage. We also have tents that we rent for viewing tents that cover for the shaded areas as well as, um, what's that? We have a V I P tent, we do tents, no, porta potties. I don't know if you're aware, and I'm sure the city of Bogalusa is aware, when you, when you go in and you try to get a porta potty, they're not cheap. Before we even open the gates, before we pay the first act, before we sell the first ticket, we're thirty thousand dollars in because of tents, porta potties, and the stage equipment that we have to add in order to, um, get these musicians something to play. So, um, every bit of money that we raise throughout the, throughout the event, every bit of that money goes back into the festival. It is rare, rare for us to make over three thousand dollars at the end of the year once all the expenses are paid, are offset and done. We are absolutely in favor of paying something for the use of the park and we have done in years past. At the beginning of this year, when I met with Chris, um, we were both very excited. And I know that the city is very excited to help host the Bogalusa Blues and Heritage Festival. This is our thirteenth year. We didn't do it one year because of COVID. And, um, even though we didn't have it that year, there were expenses still coming out. So our checking account went from a nice cushion down, 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 down. And so there's still things like our internet, our website has to be maintained monthly. That's over a hundred dollars a month. And all that money continues to come out of our account whether we use it or not. Um, when, when I met with Chris early on this year and I signed our, um, our, our, our permit for the park, at the time, it was seven fifty a day for the park, which I think is more than, than acceptable for us because we did shut down the park for two full days. We start to bring in, um, camps and stuff on that Tuesday and Wednesday, but the park is still open to the public. Um, in fact, we encourage people to come out and watch because it's really interesting. But we do shut the park down for two full days. And so therefore, we, we agree to pay seven hundred fifty dollars a day for this year, which is in problem back. I told Chris, hold on to the check because hopefully we can, um, you know, we can make that work for this year. If in years coming, if this is something that the, the council feels like needs to happen, if more money needs to come from the Blues Festival, we would like an opportunity for us to talk about that for the future. Um, our budget is already set for this year, and so if something was to... It's in three weeks. If something was to happen tonight and, and, and try to get us to pay that kind of money, it would end up, it would put us out, we just don't have the money and the budget for this year. Um, we've noticed a big downturn in the festival revenue this year. The sponsorships are still not there. The camping spots are just not coming in. Um, our ticket sales are low. A lot of that comes at the end of it. We hope to see a big uptick. A lot of people wait to see what the weather's going to do. A lot of people like to see what they have going on. We're fighting against a lot of things, so. But I'm here for questions if y'all have anything else.
Thank you. And y'all, let me get this straight. You charge a fee for each camping spot. How much is that fee?
We charge four hundred dollars for a camp.
Four hundred dollars for a camp. Uh, have y'all ever in the past paid the city?
Yes.
Or what was that paid?
Um, it could be anywhere from a thousand dollars to fifteen hundred dollars.
For the, okay.
For the use of the park.
For the use of that park?
Yes.
Okay, and, because I won't tell you publicly, y'all. Apologies, because I've never seen that one, any else of us. Where's that Blues and Heritage, you know, so, all previous administration, I'm not one of them.
Sure, absolutely.
Uh, because we will, that's what I'm trying to say. Try to determine what, what money you bank, and then whatever they...
Oh, absolutely.
It's not really going to move the meter on tax money. Because, uh, we, uh, I used to work in retailers, and retailers, we talked to them. Uh, we talked to them quite a bit. And I know it was from home local, uh, online, right now, it's carrying the purse. I will tell you that unfortunately. Uh, but I will tell you that, that this, you know, the leaders don't move on a whole lot on, on events like that. Except for the back, uh, leaders really look it up, because of your struggles and stuff like that.
It's not understanding as well that once, once the camping spots, if people that don't have campers available to them, they do contact Magnolia, and they do contact, um, Travelers, probably for us, is that what you mean? The other hotel, and a lot of times they have, they have booked out in these chats. I can't speak to them, I don't know that that, that's just what I've been talking to you for the past.
Thank you for your awesome, uh, question.
I want to ask you a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is your, uh, your expenditure in the regulars, are they regularly available, uh, with the, uh, let's say, uh, let's say, office report?
Yes, ma'am.
And I would just like to say thank you so much, and thank you for coming. And I know that your team and board members work really hard, a lot of hours on the free time, and it's just something that's good for Bogalusa.
We are a full volunteer.
We, as a city, has to do, we have to do better with getting out and supporting you all and participating in everything that goes on, uh, because, you know, other cities in towns become. So we, as a whole, okay, I'll let the city need to, any bidding that goes on to be more supportive of, you know, all the dedication and the hours that go into it. So thank you, Mr. Smith.
I'd like to say one more thing. W G N O New Orleans, um, the television station is going to be out at the festival on that Friday. We haven't had a, um, television station come out and do a live broadcast, or we've had radio stations. But not only are they doing that, they're, they actually met today, went out there, they met, met with the, um, electrician for the city, made sure that everything's ready to go. They'll have the W G N O van there. I think they contacted KK about doing some interviews with the mayor, really loved to it, as well as doing some good feel-good stories about the city of Bogalusa. And then they're also doing some commercials. They're doing, um, they're going to come out that Thursday and do a live broadcast the day before the festival starts to encourage people to come. So if you see them around, just give them a smile and tell them nice.
Ma'am?
Okay.
Thank you. The party did not trash, the party was a good drive.
A mid-grade, one-ten grade drive. As you've heard, the festival's coming up in September. This is September. They didn't know August was coming up. I would ask for the council to make an amendment to the ordinance to say this will become effective October twenty twenty-three. Not, not during their time that they're finishing up the last one. It's been done in other ordinances.
Uh, and I'd like to say to the council as amicably as possible, I think that we shouldn't be worried about what other people's budgets are. When you come and the city provides a service, you should be able to pay for that service if you want to have, whatever event you're hosting. I get it, but that's why I said to each of you in our agreements that this is to allow us to negotiate. I just don't believe that the city should be eating the cost of more utility deals from energy. Somebody has to pay for that. Or somebody has to pay for that. So, I mean, if you look at it from that standpoint, there's no free lunch for, for anyone. I support the Blues Festival, don't get me wrong. Like Ms. Good said, I have, um, every come up with W G N O about the Blues Festival. I support it one hundred percent. But what I also support is the city getting everything that it's due. That is the problem in the city of Bogalusa. Everybody wants to come here and put their hand in the pot, whether it's different departments, whether it's outside organizations. And then everybody wonders why our bank account is doing it. Ladies and gentlemen, we are not Saint Tammany Parish. We don't have the funds. Whatever people use, they need to pay for. I'm tired of coming to these council meetings saying that. To prevent this from going left, I think that the council should approve this because, I mean, in the interim, what, what is our other recourse? We get another increased utility bill. And I can tell you now, I'm not allowing it on my watch.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, um, you know, like, um, I have a question to the mayor. Um, what would be the fee for them, since it's such a short, brief notice for them who have, you know, planned? And I know we can't, like you said, keep doing things for free, but since it is kind of like sudden, like, what can we do on our behalf as, um, elected officials to help out in any way that we can? So what would be the fee that you have proposed to the Blues Festival, whoever hosts the event?
Right, well, for starters, um, we have not cashed checks for the Blues Festival. According to state law, the administration is not allowed to charge for anything that the council has not passed. So we can't take the check for fifteen hundred or seven fifty a day, whatever Ms. Good just stated. We have not cashed the check. We don't plan to cash it. You all have not produced a fee, we have not produced, and you all approved a fee schedule for Cassidy Park, so we're not taking up any funding for Cassidy Park right now.
Okay, so basically, it would be a donation for the standard, who not going to accept till a fee is in place by council, right?
Right, but it's, it's not a donation, it's a fee that she indicated. But we are not allowed to collect the fee.
Well, I'm not saying she made her own decision on this one first, but she's donated, she has given a check for a price on it already. And it's not been set in stone. So basically, that will be a donation. It's the check worth to the cash.
I, I think that's apples and oranges. The main thing tonight here is that we're asking for a hundred dollars. Ms. Good just stated they charge four hundred per camper. So, I mean.
I got that.
Right. So they still have.
For a hundred dollars? Okay. And they're charging for it. I'm sorry. I were asking how much you can give them. We're asking a hundred.
It's forty dollars for free events, a hundred dollars for.
For campers.
Paying the gas.
And she said they don't, Ms. Good, you say that we don't have all the campers. At this point, you don't really know exactly how many persons are gonna bring a camper, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And it's a short notice.
As of, as of today, I, there's probably eight.
Okay.
So, yeah, they were only charged for a camper. So we, they won't, if only eight shows up, then they would just be charging. So it would be a huge loss.
But if we, if we continue to give more campers, then the price of course we go up. If there's any more campers, if we have to pay any more.
We will be in the mix.
We're gonna be in the mix. And like, we can't run like that. Not this year. We can budget it for next year, but not now.
Well, I think that's, that's my question. Does it have to be this year or can we say?
Next year.
Next year going forward.
So, hey, I think that if we're charging a hundred per camper and they're not having to pay the fifteen hundred that she just stated, if they pay. I mean, even if you get fifteen camper, you're still, my whole point is this, if a fee is not passed tonight, I can't even promise you that we're gonna even allow campers. Because at this point, we are spending too much money on utilities. This is me approaching everybody nicely. Four hundred dollars and a hundred dollars, I mean, you're still making a profit. And you're not paying the fifteen hundred that you normally pay the city.
So, so in essence, there would be a savings. It would only be the eighth or.
So, the Blues fee is four hundred dollars per camper, not four hundred dollars a day, it's four hundred dollars per solution.
That's correct.
So, uh, here, for a solution, uh, uh, to my, can we, could we have a, uh, just a fifteen hundred dollar donation? And just tell them that we can, uh, so we can have a fifteen.
I will be honest with you if I can't agree with you.
How much can we?
If by chance, let me just, let me just give you this. If by chance this passes tonight, as, as it states on the ordinance, a hundred dollars per camper per day, which would be two hundred dollars. If we were to sell out this year, which a lot of times we have, I can ask y'all, y'all handle our campers. This is the first year we've never not had a way to do this for campers. We could sell as many as thirty spots. That would be a huge, huge hit to our, our budget of six thousand dollars. Not saying that we would love to give the city as much as we can. And we would love to make a wonderful donation to Parks and Recreation. But y'all, we don't have, the fifteen hundred dollars is budgeted in there because I signed the permit early on this year. So that's already been budgeted. But if anything above that, and you can ask y'all, it would bankrupt us this year. We would not be able to have the festival. And I'm not, I'm not kidding you. We are absolutely pension pigs down to who's coming, who's not coming. It's, it's, it's my goal this year, how poorly everything is happening. And it's not just our festival. Talk to other people at other festivals. They're all struggling with the same thing. So it's not just a Boogaloo's thing, not any of that.
I'm on tourism, you know, Perry.
You see it.
We're, we're seeing that across the border. Not only in Washington Parish, but also.
That road to Blues Fest took a big hit this year.
It's ongoing. Uh, question about this.
Yes.
Now, your rates are set, let's, let's, not, not only the mayor can, but your rates are set at four hundred dollars, right? Is there a way, do you, do you print a brochure that says that it is four hundred dollars or is it only on your website?
No, it's only on the website. And that's where they, that's where they have to go.
Could you go back and mend that website tonight and any trailer of nine forty thirty would be five hundred dollars? To cover for the four hundred dollars.
I can't do, I can't do that without having a meeting with my board.
So, uh.
And with the fee this close, it would be hard to do.
And most of the campers are from out of town. It's probably out there in the villages, the cabin fee, whether you have a speed, need, need your family, etc. You just can't grow there when we say the last name.
So, uh, what, what I propose, because this isn't just on the Blues Festival, because it's gonna be for any, if you're coming in.
Sure.
Uh, support the audience tonight. You are the mayor. Me, he has agreed to cap at the fifteen hundred for the Blues Inheritage Festival.
For the holiday.
For the years. I can't claim to occur to, to work out a meeting for the, uh.
Oh, right. Oh, no, that, that would be great.
So I make a being. So I make a motion that, uh, please, uh, say. For fifteen hundred for the, no, to, to vote on the ordinance because that's, the ordinance is June.
Right.
And the Blues, uh, Blues Inheritage, we, the mayor, for that agreement, that's agreed to cap at the fifteen hundred.
Thank you.
For, for question.
And just for, just for clarification, um, she out and spoke, um, Ms. Good out and spoke because she represented one of the festivals that goes on. There's several festivals that goes on in the park. And we would like to continue all those festivals. Now, to break it down in terms, the mayor is saying we support on anything that may go on in the park. But at the same time, the city cannot continue to support the fees. We don't wanna be a boss. We don't want y'all to be a boss. Look, I, myself speaking, councilwoman at large is saying nothing should be grown on anybody at the spur of the moment.
That is what I'm saying. For clarification. Thank you.
Um, just to let you know, mayor, I will make sure to contact some other festival areas that have the same kind of setup as we do. Where there's this city that, um, has a local park and has a festival. There's a lot of Blues festivals that happen up in the Delta. They have the same kind of setup as our city does. I'll be more than happy to reach out and find out exactly what do they charge? So that we can come to, come to a really great conclusion and solution for that year.
I'm trying to stay attentive to what's on the street, Chris. I think everybody reading a lot too much into this. Won't you just pass what the mayor action to pass? And then you weigh whatever fee you wanna weigh. Don't try to alter when you be done. Just pass it and then she can give him. And he'll tell her, okay, well, let me do away with that. That's simple.
Yes, that's. Yeah, we just, yes, Mr. K.
Thank you, Mr. K. That's the, that's the conclusion we're giving to. We, we wanna make sure that we do sound, um, that we, we, we're not knowing what's going on or no one pointing fingers at anybody. We're just saying that in order to make it work and keep utilizing the city, that we must have residents come in and ask the mayor, I would say that people want to come from all over. Let's have this in the park because we can get it at a lower fee. And but we can't go off the road and do it there because there's already, already a fee set.
I understand that you got to trust that these fair. We got to trust this man.
Trust it, please.
Just trust it.
All right. Before we, before we proceed, I want to tell you something. I know we're on discussing this already, someone. But the mayor did point out, the council needs to set a complete schedule for the parks. Not only Cassidy Park, but all, all the parks. And we need to decide that fee within reason because we don't want to chase off any events. There are some events fixing to declare bankruptcy, uh, around the state. And we did find that out on my trip to Baton Rouge, but unfortunately. So we do not want that to, we don't want to discourage events. Because in the end, believe it or not, sometime down the road, we may get a hotel, hotel type center. Uh, but that's gonna be a long, lengthy delivery process. So the thing is, let's not try to discourage events. We did it, keep that fee within reason, uh, proceed.
That's true. And also, in New Orleans and city parks, some of their festivals have, um, closed this year because they have to turn out or no one wanting to participate or pay the fees when we were doing our research.
Uh, I make a motion that we sit.
One more, I miss a little speaking down. I was like, I was.
Y'all might have had it already, but I don't know. Y'all have a Charlie car that settles to, settles to the, uh, the, 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 the park for people that can't walk in a distance, that's what I said.
Ms. Good, that would be, uh, you can give a Ms. Good access down from the meeting table. She can tell me about the combinations.
Okay.
Maybe.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First, the mayor, second, the mayor, the, the company, the vote, I hope y'all will.
Councilwoman Temple? Aye. Person to tell us.
Aye.
Councilwoman Urban?
Aye.
Vice person to tell us?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Pakes?
This is under, we're going to reamend it that people.
There's no need to reamend because this is for them to negotiate the settlement. However.
Right, a settlement.
Yeah, a meeting will occur between the mayor and.
Exactly.
Yeah, for that fee of fifteen hundred dollars.
Just be clarified. Thanks. Aye.
Councilwoman Pakes?
Aye.
Um, I have a question. Uh, once we have passed it, um, mayor, this question is directly to you. Will we set the prices for all or anyone, no matter how big or small the event? Because that's gonna be another thing, too. It may be a small event going on versus a big event like the Boogaloo's Inheritage.
Council will set that.
So are we setting it and everybody comes to the agreement or is it something that, um, the mayor is gonna?
You said in relation to campers?
Yes.
Um, so it would be the fee that's on the books?
That's already there. So we're gonna keep it the size of it, doesn't matter. Okay. See, that's another thing, too. Um, when you're talking about the electricity, it does depend on the size of the campers, too. So we do need to take that into consideration, too. Because as you say, we don't wanna continue buying the costs.
Thank you, Madam Councilwoman. Now, moving on to the last, the ordinance to be introduced to the, to be introduced to by themselves. Uh, the introduction, it's an order that's authorized to the city council to approve the higher level eval IQ and eval IT, which is an internet, uh, confidential management service. Have my motion?
Make a motion, Mr. K.
I'm gonna move to the second. Is there anyone in the public that'd like to comment or say anything pro or against this call or against this ordinance?
So for context, this, this ordinance was already approved by the council on an emergency basis because we, our IT, our former IT company, um, concluded services at the end of last month. So we needed that stopgap. Um, so this is the same exact contract, no changes. Um, it, it just has to be voted on again as a regular ordinance.
Correct. In all accounts, you just. The question I have for the mayor has been brought up since the coming to. Is there a budgeted because that company did not nail down an actual amount? Do we have a two hundred thousand dollar budgeted and they, would it be in the revised budget maybe? Uh, two hundred thousand dollars for the services for one year?
So we're not paying anybody two hundred thousand dollars for IT services. So basically, um, the initial cost is the forty thousand just to come in and untangle everything and get us back up to speed. We meet with them on a weekly basis. They don't charge anything unless we give them prior approval. Um, so we're closely monitoring the budget lines because as you know, the city does not have a budget for IT. Um, so it's mostly coming out of miscellaneous, I believe, at this point.
Okay.
Um, the, the plan is, is to just stay on solid ground until the end of the year because we're right for everything to be written in for next year. They also plan to go to the, they are approaching the Office of Homeland Security to get emergency funding for one of our servers. Because it's been here since two thousand eight. If you know anything about servers, that's well past its life. So we're working, we're trying to make sure that we, we stay on the up and up in terms of IT, infrastructure and security. But right now, it's just trying to get to fiscal year two thousand twenty-four.
Yeah, I was just, we was just clearing up. Thank you so much, Mayor Hudson. The young man confused and messed up with going, he went from a hundred eighty to a hundred fifty thousand, two hundred thousand. And we were trying to nail it, nail it down. And it triggered phone calls to us. And that's why we had to ask you that today. Not to offend you, just to straighten out. And thank you so much for your reply.
I, I do recall, um, the gentleman during his presentation, he did indicate about, uh, grants. And the mayor just indicated they were gonna do what they could to, to get us grants for our, for our achievement, our good self. With that being said, I do make a motion to pass that.
Second.
Roll call. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye. Person to tell us.
Aye.
Councilwoman Urban?
Aye.
Person to the Blues?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Pakes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Pies?
Aye.
Thank you, Councilwoman, for that. That's what I'm gonna do. Going to conclude the business portion of our meeting tonight, council will move in to some participation. Uh, first person, our, my, Cass, step up, is Mrs. Preston. You back, Preston? Night, you had it.
Uh, back, yes.
We have four minutes, man.
Okay. Uh, six, we're going to sing on the scene, actually. Um, we're, we're coming up on our Veterans Day coming up in November. I'm not sure of the city's previous plans or events during the Veterans Day or even if there is a Veterans Day parade here as well. But as Veterans Day approaches us, we can do that as well as work with other businesses and city, um, companies to help give veterans discounts, uh, say, ten, ten percent discounts on that. Autozone give veterans, uh, ten percent discount and it doesn't even go used because most people don't even know they give you a ten percent discount. So those are things and also will the city post on page, on the page, what Veterans Day contributions are being offered this year coming up for our Veterans Day? We don't want our veterans to go unnoticed, but at the same time, it needs to be within reason. And also working with our local veterans representative here in the local office for benefits around the city. That's, that's about it.
Right. Thank you for that, man. And we'll, uh, entertain that thought for you as well, unlike that idea. Next person we have is this Ellen McKey.
Ellen McKey, forty-one, sixty-six, reactor. Uh, I've been here before. I have a tree that's sick, um, stopped off in the shade. And I've talked to the council board, but she told me the tree is all, all been, powered everywhere and I can't get it. And everybody's looking, thinking, this hurricane season. And I really don't think the tree will go up behind. What you know, six secret?
Big, what do you know, six secret?
Well, the tree is sitting outside of the thing. And this land was gonna die from the little white background.
I think, uh, you have a picture of it, so we'll just have to dig it out to the.
Have you, ma'am? All right. Here's the, we have, Ms. Lady Grant?
I don't have anything, but there is a district judge candidate here who can do that, sign up when you take her, he's there. On the stairs. do that, sign up, would you take her, is there, on the stairs, and.
I can wait to meet this meeting, you know, remember? No, the pleasure is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Donald? Is that Donald? Don't have? All right, you have any examples, yes? Bill Miller?
I'm gonna say this, all of them, good evening, good. Hello, believe me? Believe you all. First, I, I listened to the council meeting, I must say, in fact, he was camped us back and, and, uh, president, uh, kept us back, and it was, uh, council, uh, make that, uh, make it, because I'm a beautiful child, why, he was away, and I go spot on, put him on the table, but it's, it's all been again, and this case, I'm gonna say, I appreciate you, and I ain't telling, then, uh, getting to your head, just to, uh, take it back, like a gun, and it was well attended, and, uh, we appreciate it. And I'd like to ask the city council, on the mayor, if y'all have a building, that community council conversation can bring from you, we've taken, interesting, a lot of things going on in the city, and with the candidates, as, uh, running for the office system, we'd like to have a place where we can meet peoples, and we're very grateful to come around, and the, uh, I'm very grateful, so let us be up there, and that we don't wanna be, uh, interfering, they're active business, so we want to have all of them, and like to be answered, and to our mighty House, sir, grant to us.
Might we give the mayor administration, or do someone in the council, actually, maybe we discuss the city, not on the, uh, thing right now, not on the top, our head, we don't know, we ain't, like, like, as you said, the city may have something, you don't, it's the administration, see what they can do.
No, thank you.
If y'all can bring the hell out, we'll sure try to do what we can.
All right, appreciate it, if we have an organization, excuse my attention, medicine, of course, it's kind of rough, but we build a lot of the city, the people, our members, and we'd like to be able to accommodate, thank y'all so much.
Thank you, too.
Mr. Mayor? There we are. As far as the political, we need to buy it, set one of the council, we'll start with Councilman Irvin. Everybody go to there, you not to there, you got, you got some, not yet?
No, do your business, I'm just kidding.
You guys, you're, uh.
Miss Ellis. Good evening, thank you for allowing me to have some time with the city, you're in town, Paris, Deller, I am a candidate for Judge, and this will be the 22nd tradition of the quarter, uh, I thank the council and the mayor for your time this evening, I just wanted to come introduce myself formally to the council and to the mayor, and, uh, pay respect to you as an organization, I have been practicing law for 30 years, all of it here in Washington, St. Tammy Parish, uh, 55 years old, I'm a veteran, raised in Slidell, um, I've served, uh, as a staff attorney for Judge Wilson and Judge Sworks for 11 years, um, assisting with every civil and criminal base that came before the court, I was appointed as the court commissioner, so in that, in that capacity, I provided over, uh, studying to our hearings and set bonds and criminal cases, I have provided over protective ward hearings and domestic peace cases, and also rule on support cases, and then for the last eight years, we're practicing criminal defense, so I see an court system from every side, from inside the judge's office, inside the courtroom, and also making decisions on the bench, on the bench as commissioner myself, um, so I feel like my entire career is a therapy of this job, um, I'm just here to introduce myself to you, uh, Washington Parish has always been very important to me, I've been working here, uh, in this courthouse in, in Frankforton for 30 years, I have many, many dear, dear friends and relationships here, they mean a lot to me, I've always cared about Washington Parish, I'm going to continue working hard for Washington Parish, if I like to spend it, um, I, I show up here every week through the docket in that courthouse, I have for 30 years, and I look forward to anything I need to do so, so, um, my cell phone number is readily available, I would use it out to anybody in here, audience, or, um, the council or the mayor's office, too, if you're asking any questions, but, um, I'm just asking for your vote, your support, um, any advice that y'all can offer, so I just wanted to come and introduce myself to you, thank you, good.
Hey, if you want to have your license, Division B, you can, you can, you have been a second, do this, you ran it.
Yes, it's the 22nd tradition, this is all of Washington Parish and all of St. Tammy Parish. I'm running in Division B. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that, Mayor.
We're here, on the, the rest of that, I know, I, uh, have a name on this, you're writing for us? No, sir, I'm not. My name is, uh, oh, I'm gonna get it right, wait, my name is Virgil Riffer, uh, on the way off of, and I just came up here to clarify some things, uh, a while back, this woman came up here, going, lying allegations, I want these people on the camera, see as well, trying to say that I was, uh, some type of fraud or something, not knowing that, I don't know if you guys know about the real aspects of this whole, uh, mosquito contract, not even about the monies, about the people that tried to slander and buy on me, uh, the whole thing, they said this contract is 76,000, it was actually cut off 50%, I was losing $6,000, and I still was taking, taking on that contract for the city of Bogusa, for the people, because that's, I want to see this administration move forward, I want to see everyone move forward, they were trying to say, oh, I wasn't, uh, liable within the registration business, oh, and all, well, I had been doing business on a whole different company, full, big old services, actually, we should have a $2 million insurance policy, so, and, uh, needing to, uh, city deal, lay out two white trucks inside a city vehicle, so, don't, the, the reason I am up here is not even for the, the money, just to clear my name, because I paid someone personally to come spray my mosquitoes, I was actually paying, I had a pocket $6,000 for the city of Bogusa to get that, like, mosquito spraying a bunch of neighborhoods, or people that I don't even technically know, but I was willing to do that, I donated thousands of dollars to the city of Bogusa, and I, I'm not from here, didn't graduate from the city of Bogusa, but when they asked me, hey, we need a donation for something, guess what, I don't, wait, I don't give no couple hundred, couple hundred dollars, I'm giving thousands of dollars at a time, so, I just wanted to say to the people that really don't know, because I do things on the back end, I'm not a computer person, I don't go to these uncredited Facebook sites, trying to make up lies and all of this, that, that, when the, see the documentation, make sure they show the documentation, where I was like, hey, I don't, even though they slander me, they need a, and, I wanna pay my future service, I wanna keep this going, to show that, hey, I'm here for it to help, not just me, because it does benefit me personally, I'm losing $6,000, I'm getting a bunch of neighborhoods free, that people that slander me don't even know me personally, it, and I do so many jobs, and you can ask the city people for free, I don't, I, I would never do, I would have worked on 23 different military bases, I do stuff here in the city for free, don't ask for money, don't ask because I'm doing it because I wanna see this administration move forward, because I wanna see this man move forward, I wanna see all of this move forward, and I'm not from here, I can't even vote, but I do everything here, and I do everything in my power to make sure that I can help move this city forward, it's so much already dividing this city, or as, you know, the crime, crime, anything else, I'm trying to be a person that actually help move this forward, not a person that hold this back, and that bothers me so much, not about the money, not about, but the lies, that they don't even know the facts of, not knowing that I was saving a $6,000 loss, not knowing that I've been working with the city under another whole company, like, they don't know any of this stuff, they don't, I, I, they knew I had two white trucks, I'm not no fraud, I just can't work on four knocks, been a fraud and things like that, I come here, and I put everything into this city I can, I do so many jobs free, if I can't do it, I tell them, hey, you can go here, Friday, for cheaper than I can do it, a fraud, I ain't gonna tell nobody to where to go, hey, you can get these people to do it for cheaper, you can get these people up here to do it for this, when, and all the schools, the people that try to talk about me, whatever like that, and put these uncredited things on Facebook, next thing, I, I want you to know, even to this day, to this point, I would still take a $6,000 loss to make sure y'all let this hood be sprayed, I would still go there, money like I normally do, thousands of dollars to the school, you can ask the senior Bogusa, and you can ask the school, no matter if it's white, black, private, public, I do everything I can to make sure this city pushes forward, because I want to see everybody succeed, not just one person, not just, like, one group of people, so, I just want them to know, even though you slander me, even though you talk about me, even though you didn't even know who I am, without facts, I would still, to this day, still go, and I would go there, the $6,000, and I would still do the job free, because that's the type of man I am, not the type of man that they try to portray me to be, y'all have that there?
Thank you, sir. The minute it's ready, the bar.
Mr. Rafferty, I just want to say that, I mean, I don't think any of us can really do much about that at this point, it's gonna have to be taken up in court, but what I will say is this, one thing that I've learned since being in, in this position is that people start at your feet and they end at your neck, Bishop DJ says it all the time, so you can't worry about what people saying on social media, some of the most, people give the most constructive criticism on social media pages, and a lot of them have not instructed anything, so they cannot take it to heart, I mean, I, I wish you best, I, I don't know what else to say about that, at this point, um, Ms. Zeller, for you, I would say, thank you for coming to Bogusa, I'm glad you stopped by, if you could, when, if you get on the bench, when you get on the bench, please help us out with this violent crime, our police department is picking criminals up, but it seems like they just keep bonding up, so we need a little bit of help with that, because, like I said a few weeks ago, I can keep them on the street until the rubber burns off the tire, but this is a moral problem that has to be corrected, and until we make examples out of people, we're gonna keep them exactly what they're doing right now.
I, I agree with Mr. Mayor, and, you know, my philosophy is that in the court system, Mr. Mayor and I have worked together for many, many years, we all need to rub the vote together, we're a community, and whether it's our law enforcement, our judges, our community leaders, our citizens, we're a team, we need to keep working as a team. Yeah. I think it should be a partnership among all of us, I'm always going to be available to receive phone calls and accessible, or come to meetings and answer questions, it's just kind of the person I am, somewhere in my practice, um, but, but I agree with you, I think crime is a problem, I'm committed to keeping our, our community safe, I grew up and raised my children in St. Tammy Parish, okay, but I am very sensitive, because of the nature of my practice and my clientele, I'm very, very sensitive to the crime problem, to the inequities in our criminal justice system that we see, and I'm committed to treating everyone who comes before me with dignity and respect, and, look, I know better than, um, better than an attorney who's only ever been a prosecutor, that most of the people who come before the court are not bad people, um, the people who have made a mistake, who have issues, that we probably have resources that we can direct to them, and help them turn their lives around, now, some people, the violent terminals, um, the people who were dealing with fentanyl, who were hurting children, who were out there with guns, making up society dangers for nobody else, they've got to go, and I have no problem drawing the logic, right and wrong, real fast, but, um, you know, people who can be helped, people who want to be helped, I'm willing, very willing to make the resources available to them, so that they can turn their lives around, and we need to break that cycle, those police, if you don't have parents that are coming to jail, they could be out working and being productive citizens and supporting their families, so, I agree with you, um, I know that crime is a very big problem, I'll be a good partner to you, if our law enforcement have a very broad support among our law enforcement community, because I will be a strong partner to them, to keep our cities and our, and our parishes safe, so, you can count on me, I will not let y'all down.
Thank you. I have, um, a few quick updates tonight, they're all positive, um, so Maggie Park, um, that's the special needs in Tottenham Park, the equipment will be delivered later this month, so please be on the lookout for, um, a ribbon cutting in that respect. Crime cameras, we finally crossed the line, Energy has ran power to our poles for the crime cameras, so they'll be going up, um, within the coming weeks as well, I think this is a great step, because a lot of times in investigations, we have a problem where people don't want to speak out, well, guess what, the camera is gonna speak for you in the courtroom, so, that, that's been a top issue for our administration, is getting not only these cameras installed, but $162,000 more worth after this round, so, we plan to place them all over the city, like I said from day one, I'm serious about this, we have to do better, because if we don't get our crime down, we can kiss economic development, a Chick-fil-A, a Waffle House, we can kiss all of them, divide, if we cannot get our crime under control, so that's the first thing that we've been focused on, on addressing. Um, as I said earlier, our IT company is in, they're getting the ball rolling, um, we have a few major problems that we'll be bringing forth, but hopefully they'll all be covered with funding by, by the federal government. Last but not least, I'm pretty sure a lot of you have seen the improvements in front of Bogusa High School along Avenue B, we're now calling this Lumberjack Lane, uh, I'm encouraging everybody to get out and come support our Lumberjacks' football season, um, these guys putting in the work, they want to be a shining example, they are a shining example for our city, so, again, I'm asking you to come out to our first home game, I'm not sure when it is, because I know we have a few away games, so next Friday at, at, um, Murder State, thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Irvin?
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, I want to thank Mr. BJ Coopallone, he's here with enter, entry of Louisiana, uh, I know I've just come to him many times on the phone, uh, in the month of August, I think it was 36, I personally reported to Energy, and I'm pleased to say all 36 have been repaired, thank you so much, and we got lots more to do across the city, uh, is the app that we're trying to get used to is kind of sluggish, and he already knows that, but, uh, we have to wrap the poles with yellow caution tape, uh, in order to get them fixed, and, uh, he's got some good guys, uh, Seth and Ethan, goes around fixing those things, and it was super hot, guys, special people, but they got, they got done, and, uh, some of those lights have been out for a few years now, but they got done, and I appreciate all the work, I, there's, there's a lot more that needs to be done in Bogusa, um, we got some out on the other side of town, I noticed that, you know, another people's district, and we appreciate any caution tape that you could afford, to Energy, to help crime a halt, so, uh, Ms. Zeller, thank you very much for coming, uh, I want to thank Mr., I think Mr. Virgil stepped out, I want to thank him for staying his side of the business, uh, very interested, and I want to thank, uh, congratulations to coaches, I know the, I know the councilman needs to go out, so I want to thank him, too, and I want to thank the administration, I think it went very good tonight with the council meeting and, uh, and council mates, I think this meeting was very productive and successful, and this is the way to conduct business, folks, I'm a business guy, so I like to, um, try to be calm and peaceful about it, but I also like, I like answers, I, I don't, you know, I want straight answers, y'all people, so anyway, thank you very much, uh, do check on your neighbors, they're in a hot weather, uh, hopefully some of that will be coming for them shortly, thank y'all, I'll be listening over there, thank you.
Uh, just again, Ms. Zeller, thank you for coming out and talking to the council of the city, um, Public Works, big kudos to you for, uh, quick turnaround of public court orders that we've been putting in, putting in, and there's been a very quick turnaround beginning this, so thank y'all for that, um, I'm assuming, even though we have that reinmission, that we're still under a guard band, so please be aware of that, and, y'all starting fires, uh, big thanks always to the fire police department for all the work that y'all do, um, look forward to the new equipment in Maggie Park, that's in my district, and, uh, thank you all for coming, and I do that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Morgan, okay?
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight, appreciate the continued prayers of the council, of the administration, I just want to thank also, uh, Mr. Julio BJ, uh, he helps tremendously in District A, in time there's a tree down, or a le, a, a light that needs to be replaced, we can call Mr. BJ, and I, I really thank you for coming out tonight, I also want to thank, uh, Ms. Good, uh, for being patient with us tonight, and the mayor for being patient with us tonight, for bringing our, uh, our, our Lucy Heritage special, which will be coming up very short, very short, thank you. Ms. Morrison, happy, thank you so much, this is, this is information, this is what's needed with the high district, the Medicaid left here, and hopefully it will help folks out, it will help folks out to get their, their Medicaid back and forth, um, want to say congratulations again to, to Chief Lattner, congratulations, sir, uh, I know I missed you last time, but, and I've seen you on, you know, just within action, so, thank you so much, and keep the, keep the, uh, good work up, Mr. Miller, thank you so much, thank you for attending to put down the guns rally, we didn't have a good doubt, good, good, down, put down the guns rally on Sunday afternoon. put down the guns rally on Sunday afternoon. And uh we have to start somewhere with our, with our young people, with our children, uh with the guns that they have in place. Uh there were a lot of ideas that were given, and hopefully we can put some of those in place uh and give it our police department as well and put in some of those, those ideas in place. And thank you again, the police department came out to the rec center. They did give a, a very, very important uh service talk to our kids at the rec center, because we had an emergency there. So I just want to thank you guys. Thank you, Public Works. Uh thank you uh, again, uh it's Public Works Department and Parks and Recreation. I did speak with uh, with Mr. Thames on the audience that I introduced last time. He did give me an update on the, the uh streets in Public Sports. So thanks to Mr. Thames and thanks to Mr., Mr. Patterson that gave an update on where we are on our streets. Um, let's see. Congratu- congratulations to uh Ms. Tower, the candidate she might have left already, our public judge candidate. Thank her for coming out tonight, this uh, and thank you, uh, Sir Rayfield, uh for expressing your uh opinions on tonight. Did you leave my way? Okay, you left. Okay. And uh thank the councilmen for, you know, a pleasant evening and a pleasant meeting on, on time. Uh I think that's, that's all I have. Thank you so much, everyone, and uh, really, that's all I have. Thank you so much and may God bless each and everyone.
Assistant Kate?
Thank you.
Thank you there for allowing us to do, answer one of the keys.
Oh, oh, yes, yes, yes. Point order, yes. Thank you, uh Mayor Trump, for allowing us to use the, the uh, Cassidy Park. I thought you were coming up to do that. On, on Sunday, we put down the guns rally. Uh people were very appreciative of that, and uh we don't have uh many parks that you can go to, to, that's a caliber of the Cassidy Park. So we do appreciate that thoroughly. Thank you so much.
Captain Morgan, Kate?
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Uh I want to say congratulations to the coaches, Pro Boy, and these other uh people that was recognized tonight. Thank you for coming to share the resources, uh Ms. Kathy. I want to send best wishes to Mrs. Sellers, along with two of our very own, who's also uh seeking uh office and has determined to make it in Councilwoman, uh Kate. Uh want to say thank you to the mayor and seeing what the work that you do, notice uh it's not an easy task, as well as my fellow men, thank you for what you do, and um, you know, keeping uh the community first. Uh so remember to keep your fellow women in prayer.
Martha Wong, she there?
I just want to take the time to thank everybody for coming out, um just being present, and for those who are watching online, we like to thank you as well. Let's remember to keep the bereaved families um lifting in prayer and set their door down, that it can be at hours tonight or in the morning. Let's just try to unify the city with prayer. We're not always able to get out and visit or donate a monetary um donation, but one thing we can do is get on our knees and pray and lift each other up in prayer. Um congratulations to everyone who's stepping up to run for office. It doesn't mean that they're running to become panics or, they're running for the government for um whatever position that they're seeking. And a lot of people get it twisted that just because that person run, we don't have to like him, but that's not the mentality to have. Let's see them, encourage them, and just tell them to keep pushing. Sometimes if we're not gonna win on our first try, if you keep running, you can really prevail. So and then in order to start running, you're a winner already to take that ambitious step. So to everyone who's running for an office position, I'd like to say thank y'all and congratulations on your new independence, and just on the path, and congratulations to your family members, because it takes a lot of hours and dedication. I don't dare give you schedule to help push forward. Also, I would like to thank um Mr. Riefer that left. Um I do have ideas to be on Facebook and um for persons to bash you, you're trying to do your best, do your best. When you're working um hours or volunteering or taking classes, just keep your licenses up. People come along and bash you, so definitely, we just have to be um mindful and pray for people and help them. Thank you, Ms. Sellers, for always coming here and always being a blessing. To whatever position you may have, it's always, you started off as a seed, and you're always ended up as a flower. So we definitely want to continue to thank you for coming out. And also to coaches. I just want to say um to him from a business, a small business perspective, and he runs his business daily. Um thank you for not giving up, if you wanted to give up and throw it aside. Because when you run a business, a lot of people don't know, especially with food, you really, in certain cases, you really don't make that much money. So I just want to commend you and your wife for any time I call or anybody knocks on y'all door of business that y'all do, go out y'all way above and beyond and to feed the poor, to feed the needy, to feed the homeless, to feed those who don't have. Just to see the need to be out there as well trying to say it, and you saw the food running out, to be a fruit for giver. And that's from the heart, because you and I have talked in a lot of times, we like, we didn't make hardly nothing today, but we're blessed because we were able to bless others. And it takes businesses like you, and just know that you're not gonna go unnoticed. Um a lot of things that we do, we do it from the heart, so God is gonna always reward us. And I just want to tell you again, I just commend you and your wife. It takes a team, and God really will honor you, God's in the city. So I'm just gonna keep encouraging you, my friend, but please do not give up. It's gonna get better. It is gonna get better. And thank you for always supporting my small business. So God bless you. May God continue to bless your family. And thank you, Mayor, for all that you're doing. Um we definitely appreciate you with sincerity. Thank you, Mr. Chris, as they were putting up the um, the banners, I passed through, and he was out there. So he's just not a person that, you know, let's do this, let's do that. Him and his team, he actually was on site. So that takes a lot of his dedication to get out of those offices and to go around the city. Yes, I'm honoring this, but it's no better than me who was actually able to get out. So I just want to thank everyone for a job well done.
Thank you, Captain Morgan, there. I'm ready to go.
First, I'd like to say, thank you for coming, uh thank the mayor and his staff. Uh also, I'd like to congratulate uh coaches. Uh Ms. Morris, thank you for your presentation. Also, I miss your name, don't call me, stick in your key. Ms. uh, say I learned. Uh just remember, we still in Hurricane City. I also want to thank Public Works, because I went around a curb. I just saw a truck hook a monster, and I went around a curb, and this tree was hanging low, and it hit my truck. Now, I'm not worried about my truck. I'm worried about y'all coming around the same curb and it hit your truck. But when I called and reported, called the works came out and they cut the limbs back. So I appreciate them for this. Also, I would like to thank the police department for Saturday. We laid a young man to rest on Saturday, and the police department was there. They did their part. It's just us as being the public that do not show respect. I don't care if you're black, white, blue, brown, red, or blue. We need to show respect. Because let me tell you something, when my time come, the whole city of Bogusa gonna be shut down. You're not as a stop sign, you're not as a barricade, you're not going anywhere. Show respect. I don't care who it is, but show respect. My last thing, I would like to wish every grandparent in here, happy grandparent's day. Thanks.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you, Jessica, for all of you who came in tonight. We appreciate you. Like to thank the public for being there, giving us your thought, being with and supporting us. We need your support. The mayor needs your support. The staff needs your support. With that being said, this meeting is adjourned.